Good afternoon. I'd like to call to order the Cabarrus County Board of Commissioners for our recess meeting for November the 15th, 2015, 2013. Sorry, I'm getting ahead of myself, aren't I? We're glad to have you all here on a Friday afternoon. Commissioners, the first item that we have is the approval of the agenda which you have before you. I need a motion to approve the agenda.
Madam Chairman, I would like to request an amendment to our agenda to include a discussion of the rope transportation grant that was voted on at our October meeting.
Okay, so, do you want to make that 3.4?
I'll second that motion, Madam Chairman.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve the agenda as amended. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. I think it will be helpful for, and it will be for me. Bob Bush is here, and Bob, can you give us a brief, very brief overview of the...
First, can I ask for a point of order? If Commissioner Morris was not here for that meeting, is he allowed to make a motion to bring that back up?
We would have to ask our attorney on Robert's rules.
Was this from the, what, October meeting that Commissioner Morris wasn't here?
Yes.
Let me just offer a compromise. I'm perfectly happy to make the motion. I just, we're going through, in terms of doing these motions and things like that, I like to make sure that, from a procedural perspective, we're acting in accordance with Robert's rules. I had talked to Commissioner Poole yesterday about making that motion myself.
Well, that would make it moot if Commissioner Osterak would like to do that. It's only someone who voted for it that can move to reconsider it.
For it, then, would you like to make the motion?
Yeah, I'll make the motion.
Okay. Then I would second, then I'll second the motion to add it to the agenda. Okay? Because we would be the ones that voted for it, so...
Yeah.
Okay. Sorry, it's always good to get a clarification on Robert's rules of order. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, so, we'll do the motion again to approve the agenda as amended, adding the rope grant as 3.4. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Thank you all. Bob, I don't want to go into a whole lot of detail, if you will, but could you come up and just briefly tell us what the 5311, 5310, JARC, and then if you want to add in a couple comments about the rope, just some brief comments? I mean, we've read it, but it might help everybody that's listening.
Sure. The 5311 is our administrative grant that we apply for every year. It helps cover administrative costs such as uniforms, office supplies, salaries, maintenance, whatnot, anything other than operating. The 5310 is our elderly and handicap grant that we received for the first time two years ago, and it helps provide transportation for the elderly and handicapped, for meal sites, medical appointments, other various appointments that they may need. The 5316 is our JARC grant, that is Job Access Reverse Commute. That is tied into employment, helps transport individuals for employment needs, and that is the grant that we use for our Cabarrus Workshop clients. Rope is our Rural Operating Assistance Program. That has three parts to it. We have RGP, which is Rural General Public, Employment, Transportation, and Elderly and Handicapped Transportation.
Okay, thank you very much. Commissioners, do you have any questions at this time that you, reading over the information that you need to ask? I know we've talked about it a good bit, so everybody's good? Okay, thank you. We are in need of doing public hearings, and when I look at the yellow cards, most everybody that noted an agenda item has all three down. So what I would propose is that we open the public hearing for all three, and I'll read it as that way, so that we can do all three at the same time, and then we would close the public hearing, and we will have our conversations. For everybody here, just as an FYI, I'm not expecting this to be an issue, however, we do want to hear from everybody that wants to speak. I'm just going to be completely honest with you, we have a 5:00 PM deadline, so if we were to go past that, which means the staff has to be able to process anything that gets approved, presuming these, some of these will get approved today, we would need to have our discussion done by about 4:30 in order to give them a chance to do that. So if we get...
Four.
Four. We need to be known by four?
Yes.
Okay, so if we get to 3:30, okay, and we still are in the public hearing portion, I will ask you politely if you will allow us to go into our discussion and close the public hearing. If there are somebody still left to speak at that time, then we will listen to your comments, but if we don't have a vote, then the answer's no. I can guarantee you, if we don't, if we're not at that point, we have to get this to Raleigh before the end of the business day-to-day, and I don't want that to be a procedural problem. Okay? So I want to say that upfront, so... Okay, so at this time, I will open the public hearing for, to discuss North Carolina DOT Public Transportation Division's Section 5311 grant for fiscal year 2015, also 5310 elderly and disabled grant funding, and 5316 JARC grant funding. We already had a public hearing on the rope grant, so we do not have to do a rope public hearing, but we will have that as part of the agenda item, so... Okay, these are in no particular order. First up, Ann Gluff.
Oh, lucky me.
I'm glad that you are lucky today.
I'm lucky, Ms. Poole. As Liz said, my name's Ann Gluff, and I am here on behalf of my son, who is 22-years-old and has Down Syndrome. He also has a mental health issue as well, mental illness. I am also here on behalf of all the citizens of Cabarrus County, the Concord area. I've been a resident here for 22-years. I think it is of the utmost that transportation is provided to people with developmental disabilities in particular, and also those with mental health, mental illness issues, the elderly, all of that. People get in positions for a lot of different reasons that require them to use public transportation. You know, stuff happens, so there are a lot of different reasons that people need this transportation. It's for employment, it's for getting to the doctor's office, it's for many, many different things. And again, I don't have anything official written, I didn't think I was going to be able to be here. I emailed each and every one of you because of that, but my training that I was presenting today ended early, so I was glad to be here, and I just encourage you all to support the citizens of Cabarrus County. That's what we voted you in to do, and I believe that that's what taxpayer money should be used for, is to support our citizens. And some citizens require more support than others, so I just encourage you to truly keep that in mind as you're voting on the grant monies that are available to this county. Thank you.
Thank you. And I will apologize in advance if I don't pronounce your name correctly, and as I should have said, if, when you come up, if you will state your name, just so that we have it in the record, in the event that, I'm not very good with phonics, so... Delton Russell?
Hi. Hello, my name is Delton Russell. For a long time, I've worked in the mental health, the mental health industry, and as a certified peer support specialist, one of the largest issues that I've seen that comes up time and time again is transportation. Put it to you this way, if you have a clinical illness and you're not able to get treatment for that clinical illness, what's going to happen to you? You're going to decompensate. So while you're debating on whether to vote on this or not, what I want to ask you to think about is what is actually a better use of money? Because you're going to spend the money, whether you spend it on the front end or whether you spend it on the back end. So either we spend the money up front, we provide transportation for people to continue to get the services that they need, or we choose to elect not to spend the money, and we wind up spending the money when people become hospitalized after they decompensate. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Martha Makin.
Hello. I'm Martha Makin, and this is Michael Makin, who thoroughly enjoys going to Cabarrus Vocational Opportunities. We are so pleased. I'm going to cut some of my stuff that I was going to say short, because Ann Gluff did a beautiful job in expressing that, as she usually does. But I think these grants are just especially important, and I know this year, you know, there are several grants, and there are different ways that these things can be combined, and I don't want you to throw the baby out with the bathwater. Let's accept those as they are, and then, within the time, be able to work on it and to see if there are things that can be trimmed down, if there are some abuses that are taken, let's take advantage of that, but let's don't, let's don't stop it. Let's do that during the process of the time that we have these. And I was very impressed with the letter to the editor, and some of the people here may have already heard this, I want to read this, unless Antonio Montgomery is here. He wrote a neat letter to the editor. "I'm a citizen of Cabarrus County, and I used to drive the transportation vans part-time. I was appalled at the article in the paper that actually stated that the commissioners were debating on whether or not to accept the grant money to continue picking up the elderly and the disabled and take the people to work who otherwise would have no way. I know firsthand that these are deserving, fine people of our county who do need help, and this is a tremendous service for them." Now, this is from the man who is driving this. Now, this commissioner also says that he would like, this writer, this one who'd been a van driver, has said he would like to see that each of you guys would have an opportunity to ride on the van, spend a day riding on the van and seeing what actually goes on with that. Your life may not have been touched by persons with disabilities, with, whether they are persons with the poverty, with little or no background or family support, and those people need our help. And as a society, I'd like for us to be able to consider that. Now, so that you may also have another opportunity to get to know us better, there is an open house from Cabarrus Vocational Opportunities, and Michael is going to pass out each one of you an invitation. So would you just go right up there? You can get it to Steve first, okay? Give one to each of those commissioners. And thank you very much for hearing us, and hopefully you will be able to make a wise decision in behalf of all the residents of Cabarrus County. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Michael. Thank you. Thank you, Michael. Next, we have Anna Kane.
Hi, my name is Anna Kane, and I'm with the ARC of Cabarrus County, and I would like to serve as an advocate to folks with developmental disabilities. After viewing the video from, I believe it was November the 4th, I just want to share that for many adults who are typically developing, they are not at risk of health and safety issues while waiting at a bus stop. They are not at risk of exploitation in the community. You know, I just wanted to share that a lot of the folks that we support, if they could do these things independently, they would. With the supports that they have, that's what gets them closer to the independence. To take it away, as the gentleman back here said, would limit their opportunities for socialization and to better deal with those situations that may occur. Thank you.
Thank you. Excuse me. Next, Helen Hunt. Welcome.
Hi. I'm Helen Hunt. I live in Harrisburg. I've lived there for 23-years, and I think our population is about 12,000 people now. So, you know, we can do a lot when it comes to elections and voting as to who gets in on this commission. I am speaking in favor of the transportation grants. We, the citizens of Cabarrus County, take pride in our community. We always have. We stand above a lot of other counties. Each and every person, no matter if they are poor, senior citizens, or have mental and physical disabilities, they are all part of our society. These services have allowed the least of our brothers and sisters to improve their quality of life and to feel worthwhile in spite of their vulnerabilities. Without this transportation, they cannot be self-sufficient, and they cannot contribute back to our community. We have an obligation to assist them. It is the duty of the Cabarrus County Commissioners to serve the people of our county. The board is not to be used as a means to promote personal and political agendas. Those issues are running rampant in Washington, DC, and as Americans, we are all sick of them. I don't have a problem with my tax dollars being used to assist these elderly, poor, and disabled people. I do have a problem with it being wasted in subsidizing billion-dollar corporations, but this is Cabarrus County, not Washington, DC. We won't talk about that. The grant money has already been allocated. It is a total disservice to the people of this county. If you refuse it, it will go to another county or another state. Voting no on these grants is not immoral, but discriminatory. As the Good Book says, "Whatsoever you do to the least of my brothers, that you do unto me." And it also says, "Those that exalt themselves will be humbled." So I suggest you do the right thing and keep this program in place, because everybody deserves to be part of this community and not excluded for any reason whatsoever. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I have Vicki Harris.
Good afternoon. As you said, I'm Vicki Harris, and I've worked in many capacities in this community, and mainly for persons with disabilities. I want to say I have personally used the transportation service when my husband came very ill. I used it one time to get him to Charlotte. I don't know how I would have gotten him there otherwise, because he was instantly paralyzed. So sometimes you just need a temporary boost. That's the emotional side here. This other is emotional, because I know most of the folks in this audience, I've known some of them since they were born. You know, there's not a family in this audience or people in this community that have not paid some taxes to deserve to get transportation they need. Just because you can work doesn't mean you can drive. Many of the people do not drive, so we need to give them the opportunity to get to work and do as much as they can. I think we need to let our families age in place. What does that mean? That means we have a 90-year-old mother here with a 62-year-old daughter that she was taking to work, and then she was able to have the benefit of the services, so why shouldn't her daughter be able to use, use that service? You age in place. At some point, you know, you have to say, do we want to support somebody going out to nursing homes or whatever, other kinds of homes? If we can support them here with a little bit of money and a little bit of support with dignity, why don't we do it? And that's what I'd like to advocate for, all three grants. Just think about this, this is one saying I heard years ago. "We are all temporarily abled bodies." Any of us today could stop driving, any of us today could stop working, and our family members may have to help us. But if we don't have those family members, we have to turn to our society to help us. So keep that in mind for the folks. Thank you.
Thank you. Andrea Robertson.
My name is Andrea Robertson. I have a son with a developmental disability. He's 23-years-old, and I have a very, very dear friend who also has a child that benefits from CVO, and transportation is an issue, you know, for jobs and getting around, and CVO bridges that gap that these children need. And, well, they're adults, but our children deserve the best of everything that everybody else can benefit from, that a typically developing person can benefit from. And I just hope that you guys do the right thing to continue the, continue the funding for this, for these programs.
Thank you. Tina Bissett? Did I get it?
Yep. Good afternoon. My name's Tina Bissett. I'm a nurse. I'm a single parent. I adopted a child with fetal alcohol syndrome. She is 24-years-old. She functions on the level of an eight to a 12-year-old. None of this is her fault. She would love nothing more than to be able to go to the mall and hang out with her friends. She is not safe to do that without supervision. She's not safe to wait for a bus. She's easily manipulated. Like I said, she, she functions on the level of an eight to a 12-year-old. Would you allow your eight-year-old to go out and catch buses and wonder where they're going to get off? Who's going to manipulate them into getting off at a stop that's not theirs? These are the problems I face with my child. Without the transportation to get her to CVO, she would have to sit home. I can't quit my job to take her back and forth. She needs the social aspect of it that we all enjoy, you know? We can get in our cars, we can go and have dinner with our friends. This is her only outing, you know, unless she's with me. This is the only time she has to be with her peers. She's got pride in the fact that she has a job. You know, this is a child that they said would never amount to anything, and she's reading, she's writing, she's holding down a job with assistance, you know? And to take that all away from her would be a shame. So I hope you all do the right thing. I hope if none of you have any contact with special needs individuals, take in Special Olympics event, go to the function at CVO, and see the good that is done there. Thank you.
Thank you. Lucas Baker.
Good afternoon. My name's Luke Baker. I'm a lawyer here in Concord, North Carolina. Me and my wife Laurie have lived here for about five years. Some of you I know, some of you I don't know. I want to thank each of you for the service that you provide to our county in being leaders here. What I'm most concerned with is what I've observed over, you know, just lately, which is a lot of rhetoric that appears to me to be violent towards the least of these in our society. You know, and that's the true measure of a just society, is how we treat the least of these. You know, the people who are impacted by the decisions that are being made here, you know, are indeed the least of these. And I couldn't have put it better, the way I see it, than Ms. Hunt put it. But I don't have to rely on public transportation. I really never have, aside from riding the apple cart to get to the parking lot to my car when I was at Appalachian State. You know, I haven't grown up rich or anything by, I guess, by some of today's standards, but I've been well taken care of. You know, I haven't had to struggle. I've got the use of all my limbs, you know? I want to see my tax dollars going to help the least of these. You know, I want to see the government doing, doing that. I want to see my elected officials doing that. That makes me feel good. Makes me feel good about voting for you again. Makes me feel good about writing letters to the clients of our law firm when it comes time for election to tell them what, what our firm is supporting. Now, so the federal government's got some money. That decision has been made by the folks up in Washington to put it down here for this county and other counties and states to apply to. I will be very disappointed and, dare say, angered to see that money just thrown away because someone, one of you, or several of you, feel that using those federal funds is somehow dirty money, and that you're afraid to use it or won't use it because it will somehow cause taxes to rise. You know, there are other people dealing with that sort of issue and big picture, and it's not you guys. All right? The money's here to help our community. This is a community issue. All right? So I'd ask that you utilize great wisdom and care in considering the impact that your decisions will have on the least of those in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. The next, next name is John Williams.
Good afternoon, and thank you for the opportunity. My name is John Williams. I'm the Director of Rowan Vocational Opportunities and Cabarrus Vocational Opportunities. We serve approximately 225 disabled adults in Rowan County, Cabarrus County, Davie County, Davidson County. I know all about transportation problems. We use three vans from Cabarrus County to help our guys get to work. We have 17 vans of our own. We pay $1,000 per day in transportation costs to help our guys get to and from work. We also use Cabarrus County vans. We also use Rowan County vans. I want to thank you for holding this special hearing today. I also want to thank Randy Bass, who's not here, and his staff and drivers for thinking about our consumers every single day. We greatly appreciate the partnership that we have with Cabarrus Transportation. CVO, sometimes referred to as Cabarrus Workshop, gives opportunity, training, and education for adults with intellectual and developmental disabilities to develop work habits and skills leading to employment. CVO, as it's commonly known, also provides our consumers with life skills, education to increase the independence functioning at home and also in the community. CVO presently serves 64 Cabarrus adult citizens, 64. I'm here today to advocate for our 34 consumers who ride Cabarrus Transportation every weekday to and from CVO. They could not be here today to speak, as they are at CVO working, and Cabarrus vans will arrive at 3:00 to pick them up and return them home. Those three vans are filled to capacity, both to and from CVO. These consumers come from all over Cabarrus County, Mount Pleasant, Kannapolis, Harrisburg, and many small communities. Several of our consumers who live in nursing home centers or live in an independent living setting would not be able to get to work if not for Cabarrus Transportation. Others who are bound to a wheelchair need the wheelchair list that many vans provide with Cabarrus Transportation. Many of our consumers live with their parents or grandparents who are disabled as well and cannot provide transportation for them. Again, without Cabarrus Transportation, our guys could not get to work. You and I fortunately were born with the intellectual capacity and physical ability to obtain a driver's license and/or ride a bike. These wonderful citizens of our county were not. They are dependent upon someone to drive them everywhere they go, including their job. Even if they were physically capable of walking to work, the safety risk for someone with a mental disability is just too great. Without the utilization and support of Cabarrus Transportation, these citizens will encounter financial, emotional, and personal hardships that will negatively impact their lives.
CVO, sometimes referred to as Cabarrus Workshop, gives opportunity, training, and education for adults with intellectual and developmental disabilities to develop work habits and skills leading to employment. CVO, as it's commonly known, also provides our consumers with life skills, education to increase the independence functioning at home and also in the community. CVO presently serves 64 Cabarrus adult citizens, 64. I'm here today to advocate for our 34 consumers who ride Cabarrus Transportation every weekday to and from CVO. They could not be here today to speak as they are at CVO working, and Cabarrus vans will arrive at 3:00 to pick them up and return them home. Those three vans are filled to capacity, both to and from CVO. These consumers come from all over Cabarrus County, Mount Pleasant, Kannapolis, Harrisburg, and many small communities. Several of our consumers who live in nursing home centers or live in an independent living setting would not be able to get to work if not for Cabarrus Transportation. Others who are bound to a wheelchair need a wheelchair list that many vans provide with Cabarrus Transportation. Many of our consumers live with their parents or grandparents who are disabled as well and cannot provide transportation for them. Again, without Cabarrus Transportation, our guys could not get to work. You and I fortunately were born with the intellectual capacity and physical ability to obtain a driver's license and/or ride a bike. These wonderful citizens of our county were not. They are dependent upon someone to drive them everywhere they go, including their job. Even if they were physically capable of walking to work, the safety risk for someone with a mental disability is just too great. Without the utilization and support of Cabarrus Transportation, these citizens will encounter financial, emotional, and personal hardships that will negatively impact their lives. Without a ride to work, they will simply have to stay at home. Both health and safety factors present a risk, as some of our consumers would need someone to stay with them during the day or might need to be placed in much more expensive institutions or chronic care facilities solely because of their lack of transportation. I ask you on behalf of our 34 disabled Cabarrus County citizens who ride Cabarrus Transit every single day that you vote for these grants. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next, I have Lana Gibson.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Lana Gibson. I attended the agenda meeting this past Monday because I was hoping to be able to get the ROPE grant that the Commissioners voted on while Mr. Morris was out of town put back on the agenda for the next meeting. I was surprised to hear that there were several other grants to consider regarding this same transportation issue when I sat in on the meeting. I had to leave early, but I did hear about the public meeting on the 15th, and so I came here today to say my piece. Quite frankly, I was appalled at the insensitive and ignorant comments that were made by Commissioners Meesmer and Ostrick regarding these grants at that meeting. I have a handicapped son, James, who was born with cerebral palsy. He is a 23-year-old, he is 23 years old and has been wheelchair-bound his entire life. He works as a volunteer at the Boys and Girls Club with the children in the after-school program three days a week. It gives him great joy to be useful to them and to be independent of caregivers for a few hours each week. He has a power chair that he uses instead of his legs. I also have a sister, Clemmie, who depends on me to help her handle her affairs and to get her to appointments when I am available. I am not able to be available all of the time, and so she has been using the CCTS van service to get her to appointments when I can't be there. Clemmie also works as a volunteer at Cooperative Christian Ministries. Her work there is very important to her. She takes the van to her job because it is far too dangerous for her to walk to work on the busy highway where she lives. It should also be noted that the service is not free. She buys ticket books and must use a ticket each time she boards the van for each trip she takes. My neighbor across the street, Lucy, also depends on the CCTS van to get her to her job at the Cabarrus Arena. She lives with her mother, who is 90 years old. Sorry, I had to, I'm sorry. Her job is also very important to her. She is a productive citizen who takes pride in the fact that she works and therefore does not have to be totally dependent on her mother for everything. None of the folks I mentioned have ever been able to drive a car or ride a bike to work as Mr. Ostrick suggested. All of them would give anything to be able to do those things, but it is just not the case, and they will all need a little help from others their whole lives. Mr. Ostrick also stated that to get some lady to a hair appointment or to the mall for a few hours to maybe buy a new dress would be flushing federal money down the toilet, in his opinion. He has obviously never known what kind of loneliness and isolation some of the shut-ins go through every day of their lives and how much it can lift their spirits just to get out of the house for just a little while, and apparently he does not care either. Mr. Meesmer stated that while he supposed enhancing someone's quality of life was important, he was more concerned about what it might do to his own quality of life if he should have to pay more taxes to help fund some of these programs. I was really surprised that he had the audacity to actually say that. I suppose that I assumed that he understood that when you are elected to a public office, you work for the people who put you there and not for yourself. Apparently, I was wrong about that, too. Something else that I don't believe that they understand is that the cost of a Lyft van, even a used one, is extremely expensive, and not everyone who is wheelchair-bound is able to afford one, and most folks couldn't drive themselves even if they had one. Also, people are complaining, people are always complaining about the elderly people who drive themselves around being a danger to others and should not have a license after a certain age anyway. Our wonderful county has found a way to get all of these folks around, and these people don't want to help them keep it. These are people who are giving back to the community the only way that they can, and they spend their money here, which generates more income and creates more jobs. These folks also pay taxes, just like the rest of us. But most importantly to the Commissioners, I think, is that these folks all vote, and they will be listening to the decisions made on these issues here today very closely. I'm here to speak on behalf of the folks I have mentioned and others like them. I would love to have been able to fill this chamber today with every walker in wheelchair in town. I wish that all of the people who need these vans could have had adequate representation here today. I realize that there are some people who know how to work the system and who take unfair advantage of every opportunity they can to get goods and services that they really should not be entitled to, but it is not reasonable to punish the people who truly have a need simply because we don't want the cheaters to get away with it. I am really hoping that these grants will be accepted and that these programs can continue to move forward. I believe that it is extremely important to our community, and I also believe that we will save money in the long run by allowing the folks who need the service to be able to stay in their own homes with their families and not have to move to a nursing home or assisted living facility in order to have their needs met. I am very hopeful that you are for this also. Thank you for your time.
Charles Hendricks. Sorry, Charles Hendricks. Thank you. I didn't know if they could hear over the clapping. We're having a couple of technology issues today.
My name is Charles Gilbert Hendricks, and I go by the nickname my father gave me, who was an avid baseball player and state championship Babe Ruth league coach, and his favorite player, Gil Hodges. Appreciate the opportunity to be here today. I originally came here to discuss some problems and issues I have with CCTS, which I'm very grateful to be able to participate, but I didn't realize that y'all's agenda was quite crowded with the grant issues until after speaking to a representative I have supported with my votes in the past and understood that the ROPE program was voted down in a previous meeting. And so I can forego the issues and maybe take those up with you and suggestions that I have that could improve the efficiency of CCTS due to some management, where I believe the problem is in the management level. However, I would like to speak on behalf of all of those who take advantage of the ROPE program with CCTS. Fortunately, or if you can consider it fortunately, I qualify for the ADA program, and I'm able to purchase the discounted tickets for $2, so I don't have to participate in the ROPE program. Because I understand that the ROPE program basically, as many people have so eloquently spoken before me, provide transportation for those people who are trying to function in our society as best to their ability as they can, many of whom are employed and do jobs that they can physically or mentally do, which I appreciate the fact that they are at least trying to be productive members of our society and stay off the public dole as much as possible. And however, those people have very, very serious challenges in transportation, as the last lady just eloquently stated. And I'm a fiscally conservative, registered politically independent, but I vote for candidates who I believe reflect my values as far as strict constitutionalist, fiscal conservatism. And Mr. Meesmer and Mr. Ostridge, I understand you were the dissenting and deciding votes due to Mr. Morris being out of town on the ROPE program. And I hope your intentions were, because our federal government is broke and $17 trillion, approaching $17 trillion in debt, and $90 trillion of unfunded liabilities, that that may have been your thinking in voting down that grant, that we just can't afford it and looking at the bigger picture of what it does do to all of us as taxpayers. However, I believe there's enough fraud and waste in our federal government, as well as even here locally, with DSS that you all could go through with a comb and find some money that's being wasted and illegal aliens that are getting benefits that the Constitution provides that they should not be getting. So to penalize people who are trying to work and, I ride a bus occasionally, there's a young man that is probably a ROPE program rider, works at the Chick-fil-A on 29 down by Walmart, and I've ridden with him before. And if you go in there, he doesn't, he is not tasked with running the cash register, taking orders, but if your order has to be cooked and you have to wait, he will courteously bring it out to your table and keeps the dining room clean. And to tell that young man to get a bicycle and ride to work, Mr. Ostridge, would be kind of callous. And I just thank Mr. Meesmer that, I appreciate your family's hard work and risk-taking and success in the restaurant business, and I know you probably came up, maybe not with a silver spoon in your mouth, but pretty well taken care of. But I would hope that you all would rethink your consideration on that bill and bring it back up for a vote, because these people deserve, and as I said, they're trying their best to stay off the public dole and contribute to society and be as independent and help themselves as much as possible, and I think they should have the right to do that and given the consideration and help that they need to do that.
Thank you. Okay, those are all the yellow cards that I have received so far. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone else who wants to speak for or against the grants that we are going to discuss? Yes, sir? Then I'll come back. And if you will, please state your name.
I'm Ernest Makin, and I heard my wife talk, told my son. They forgot one thing, and this will be very brief. I think we should support these grants and accept the money because it saves us money. What we're doing here, we're deciding whether or not to allow some people, and I'm not talking about the CVO people where my son goes. I'm sure y'all are going to take care of that one way or the other. But there are a lot of people here in this county that if they can't get this low-cost public transportation, they cannot work, plain and simple. While there's some fraud out there, sure, but these people, if they don't have it, are going, we're going to have to support them 100% with the welfare money. This saves us money. It's a good economic decision to accept this money and save us money in the long run. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners, for this opportunity.
I know we know you state your name first.
Okay. Rick Starnes, Concord. One of the few natives left in Cabarrus County. I don't blame you for looking at this twice, Chris and Jason. We are under the most crooked administration this nation has ever seen, so I don't mind you looking at this issue and these funds twice, especially when there might be something attached to it, but not this time. We need the funds for our senior citizens, our disabled, our disadvantaged. It reminds me of some other funds that we were looking at at one time. This has probably been 20 years ago, when this county was looking at a grant for an airport. Gaston County decided not to do their airport. We got their funds. We got to build a $20 million airport for $5 million. So we definitely need these funds, I think, for our senior citizens. And again, Chris and Jason, thanks for taking, you know, looking at this twice, because I know this is going to be a 5-0 vote in favor of the grants. I know that's going to happen. Let me leave you with one thing, if you're still considering this. It's going to be a doggone shame if this same, or if this Board of County Commissioners, not the same members, but this same board, gave a grant to Obama's cell guard for $350,000 in cash and not give these guys what they need. Thank you.
Okay, and again, those are the cards I have. Is there anyone else still to come before, during the public hearing? I see none. I will now close the public hearings. Hi, Commissioners. The first one that we have before us is 5311 grant, and that is the one that covers the administrative cost. At this time, I would open it up for any comments or questions or discussion that you have.
Madam Chairwoman, I have quite a few comments. I will say, first, I thank you all for coming. I have said, I used to sit out here and come up and make public comments, and I appreciate very much that you are willing to come and participate in your government. The more people that we have participating, the better off that will be. I think the comments that I made in our work session were very misrepresented in the newspaper, to be honest with you. And I'll just give you some explanation. So these grants provide tremendously important services for probably 90% of the grant, right? Taking our elderly people to the doctor's office, that's tremendously important. Taking our disabled people to work, what a great opportunity for them. That's imperative that we do that. The comments that I made had nothing to do with those two things, but what we do have is people that, I talked to Ben Rose about this last week. A lot of the people that are able-bodied are participating in several other programs. They can get food stamps, they can get daycare. We are subsidizing their work efforts in so many different ways, and quite frankly, I feel that it is acceptable to say it is your responsibility to get yourself to work at the least. That's all that I'm asking of them. You need to get yourself to work. If you are an able-bodied person, then you need to get yourself to work. And the comments that I made with respect to riding a bicycle, or buying a scooter, or buying a cheap car is with respect to able-bodied people, and it had nothing to do with our disabled. I think those are imperative services. So this brings me back to my overall problem, which was, how do we continue to fund the things that we need to do and not fund the things that are really not efficient use of your taxpayer money? People can call this a federal grant. The federal government doesn't just make up money. The federal government takes it from you and then gives it to us. It's still your tax money. So how do we minimize the waste of that tax money? And so what I did was I went up to see Randy Bass. I said that I would at the meeting, and I went up and I spent a half-day with him. I met with his whole staff. And I sat down with him, and I said, Randy, these are the problems that I'm having. I want to fund these imperative elements of these grants and services, and I would like to not fund these things. And how can we accomplish that? And Randy said to me, Jason, what I really need are those ROPE funds back. And I said, okay. He said, if you can give me those ROPE funds back, then what I can do is take all of our CVO clients, and I can put them into the 5310 and 5311, with the exception of a couple, but I can put them on the RGP program, and we can make sure that we get all of our CVO clients taken care of. He said, Jason, that would cost $6 instead of $2. With a funding of $6,000 from the general fund, we could put that cost back down to $2. So everybody in the CVO program would be taken care of. And that would essentially allow us to exclude some of the efficiencies, and we would keep three grants and let one grant go, which would be a savings of $500,000. And so that was a compromise that we came up with. There are several benefits to that compromise. One of the things that he talked about at our work session was the fact that we spend a lot more money right now giving services to Medicaid clients through third-party contractors. We spend almost $500,000 a year right now providing taxis to the Medicaid clients. He said that those are very expensive. They're more expensive than running our buses and our vans. He said that this compromise would allow him to actually service all of those Medicaid clients directly, so that would be a benefit to us, and also we would save some money. I think that's a good compromise. It allows us to continue funding at 100% level all of the essential medical services for our elderly, all of our services for our CVO clients, which are really the people that I've heard from you tonight are absolutely necessary, and I agree with. I would also respond with respect to the comments about whether it's appropriate for a Commissioner to look at the big-picture issue in America. One of the tools that I use in evaluating my votes is I look and, I mean, we're leaders here, right? You've elected us to be leaders. And as a leader, I look and say, if I vote this way and everybody else does what I do, are we going to be better off or worse off as a community, as a country, as a state? are we going to be better off or worse off as a community, as a country, as a state? And if we continue to take every dollar, whether we need it or not, we're going to be worse off. And quite frankly, I mean, when did America get to be where you took every dollar that you could possibly get your hand on? Because if you didn't, somebody else was going to take it. When did we turn into that kind of a society? That makes me very sad, to be honest with you. And people say, Jason, if you want to think that way, run for Congress. If you want to think that way, run for the state legislature. Listen, this is all hands on deck right now. Have you looked around at America? We're $17 trillion in debt. You don't have to run for Congress. You don't have to run for state office. Sit right here and do something about it. I hope that all of you out there will help me do something about it, to be honest with you, because it's time for all of us to stand up and say, we can't do this anymore. We talk here about our children and things like that. Our children aren't going to have any of these services if debt continues to be here, because we're not going to have any money to do any of these things. That's all that I have. I will vote for the rope grant, I will vote for the 5310 grant, and I will vote for the 5311 grant. And that will provide all of the essential services for the clients. It will provide 100% services for our CVO clients and 100% services for elderly for their necessary trips.
Commissioner Burge, do you want to go next?
I talked to Randy myself first of the week, and I didn't get the same impression that he could do without some of these grants. And I'm not going to sit here and vote against poor people, handicapped people, and disabled and elderly. My heart won't let me do that, regardless of what my mind wants to do. I'm against most of these grants. I don't like them. But I'm not going to harm the citizens of Cabarrus County that need it the worst in order to sit up here and say, I saved a dollar that the federal government's going to spend anyway.
Well, and I will thank everyone for being here today, and it's great to hear from everyone, all the comments that were made. I agree with majority of the comments that were made today. And I do believe that there's a lot of misinformation regarding our previous discussion of these grants. We, by no way, shape, or form, did any of us think that the elderly, the handicap, or the disabled service should be taken away. None of us have made that comment. None of us felt that way. The root of our discussion was whether or not to take federal grant money to make these programs operate, or to use local funds, that we know where the funds are coming from, to fund the program. As I said, that was the root of the discussion, is whether or not to use our local funds or take federal funds. And as I said before, there, I don't think any one of us up here wanted to stop any program for the elderly, disabled, or the handicap. It just, I don't think any of us feel that way. And with reference to the Cabarrus Vocational Workshop, I think that's a very good program. I think it's very important. No one wants to stop their transportation. I think each and every one of you that spoke today, who either receive a certain service or know someone that is receiving that service, I don't think anyone here's service is going to be cut. We're looking at taking the 34 clients from the CVO and moving them into another grant. It's simply, it's been simply miscommunicated what exactly is going to take place. And as I said before, the root of our discussion come from whether or not we would take federal funds, or if we could use our local funds and decide which programs were best suited. And as I said, there was no discussion about taking away the transportation for the elderly, the disabled, or the handicap.
I have certainly given this a great deal of thought. I was very concerned in my absence when the rope grant was turned down last month. I think that was an unwise decision. I have also had conversations with the folks in the Transportation Department, and the answers that I have received are not exactly as what Mr. Osterreich has indicated, particularly in the savings area. One of the things that I was interested in knowing more about are local matching requirements on these grants. When we turned down the application for the rope grant, we also gave away the matching funds for one of our other grants. So we're talking about local tax dollars, and the federal tax dollars are, they are, they're your tax dollars. They're my tax dollars. We pay those federal taxes and state taxes and gasoline taxes, supposedly to benefit all of us. So when we turn down those funds, even if we don't agree with the way the federal government administers those, I think, as an elected official, I am doing a disservice to the taxpayers in my community. One of the questions about the matching funds on the, and I'll be honest with you, these guys throw acronyms at me all the time that I have a hard time keeping up with. But the RGP portion of the rope grant requires that we have a match of $8,064. We can use the fares that we charge to people that ride that to come up with those matching funds. So our amount was $8,000, and the amount in fares that we collected were $19,749. So obviously, we brought in enough income to cover that matching portion of the grant, as well as providing those services to those clients. Now, the comment was made earlier that for only $6,000 in local funds, we could provide services for all of the various categories that we've talked about. Obviously, there are going to be some people that are going to be eliminated. And the only way in good conscience that I could vote to eliminate service to any of those people, and I think Ms. Smaken said it correctly, you know, I'm not willing to throw the baby out with the bathwater. You know, I'm sure there's somebody that abuses the system. I don't know of any system anywhere that somebody doesn't abuse it, but that can't govern our decisions. So I would not be in favor of spending $1 in local funds when we are sending money that we have already paid to the state and to the federal government to provide these services for us. So, you know, I could say a lot of other things about this, but it would not possibly add to the things that I have heard stated by you in attendance at the microphone tonight. You made the case very well. So I will be voting in favor of all three of these grants, and I will also vote in favor of reversing the action of our last meeting to restore the rope grant. Thank you.
Okay. And for my comments, I don't need to repeat things that have already been said. I will say that Clemmie, it is always a pleasure to see you. I don't know if you remember, but way back, a very long time ago, and I was not successful. I can tell you Clemmie was much more successful than I was. We took dance classes together. One of those things that actually I probably should never speak about in public, but it's always good to see Clemmie. And Lucy, you warm my heart every time I see you. For those of you that may not know, she is the, by far, the largest fundraiser for the Crop Walk, probably ever in its existence in Cabarrus County. And so Lucy is in my neighborhood, so I see her all the time, and she's usually out walking. And so it's always a pleasure to see you and your mom. Martha, you and your son have been before us before, talking about the benefits of his employment and how important and special that check is. And Michael, it is great to see you here tonight, or this afternoon. And for Anna, for the ARC, I come in contact with exceptional children every single day and was surprised a few years back to receive an award from the ARC, because my job site, my business at the time, was a job site for OCS students that came on a daily basis. And I know how much they benefited from working, and frankly, I know how much I benefited probably more than they did, because they were always excellent employees and a joy for us to have at our business. So there are a number of other ones of you here today that I have known for a very long time, and I do appreciate you coming. 2 o'clock in the afternoon isn't always the easiest time for you to come out, and so I want to say I appreciate you all being here. I think you've heard of plenty of comments from all of us, and I know that we've heard from you. In order to, for me to keep an eye on the clock back there, commissioners, I would ask you to look at page 2 on your agenda. That is the 5311 grant. The motion that we need at this time is to adopt the Fiscal Year 2015 Community Transportation Program Resolution and Human Service Agency Transportation Resolution, which is the 5311 grant. Do I have a motion at this time?
So move.
You move to...
Accept.
Okay, to adopt the resolution.
Adopt the resolution.
Thank you. And I have a second.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. And if I can get you now, commissioners, if you will go to page 58. 58 is the Public Transportation Program Resolution for Fiscal Year 2015 Elderly and Disabled Grant, the 5310. At this time, I would accept a motion to adopt the grant, or I will accept a motion, let's put it that way.
I'll make a motion to accept.
I'll second the motion.
We have a motion and we have a second on the 5310 elderly and disabled grant funding. All those, is there any other comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. This time, I would ask that you turn to page 93 in your agenda. That's the 5316 JARC grant funding. And at this time, I would accept a motion concerning Public Transportation Program Resolution for the Fiscal Year 2015 JARC Grant.
I'll make a motion to accept.
Okay, I have a motion to accept. Is there a second?
Second.
There is a motion and a second. Although, is there any other discussion?
I would just say that my vote will be based solely on the fact that we could recategorize all of our CVO clients to other programs and continue to serve 100% of them in exactly the same fashion and save money by voting against this. And that's my comment.
Okay, any other comments? Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries 3 to 2. Do not have an agenda item for the rope, but I will phrase it similar to the last ones. At this time, do you have an agenda item from before? Thank you very much. Okay. At this time, I would accept a motion for the Fiscal Year 2014 Rural Operating Assistance Program. It says 14 here.
It is 14. It's funding for this year.
Yeah, this one's, I think, a one-year, not a two-year?
That's the state grant.
One year, is it 2014? Okay. Thank you for clarification, sorry. Okay, for the rope grant. Is there a motion to be made at this time?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, you made the motion?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so we have, and you seconded?
Before you vote. Bob, can you clarify that? It's fiscal, fiscal 14 is already in place, correct? Just want to make sure we get the right dates.
No, I agree. Okay, so Fiscal Year 15 Rural Operating Assistance Program, you amend your motion for Fiscal Year 15?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and you second that?
Yes.
Okay, so we have a motion and we have a second. Is there any other discussion on the rope grant? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes, five, motion passes. Okay. There being no other business to come before the commission, at this time, I would accept a motion to adjourn. I have a motion, do I have a second? Second from Commissioner Meesmer. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Again, thank you all for coming out this afternoon.